Good evening, everyone. We're going to call to order the Township of Falls Planning Commission meeting in September 26, 2023. Please stand for salute to the flag.
(inaudible)
Our first item on the agenda is item number one, SAF Store. Oh, my bad. I missed a month and that's what happens. Mr. Benny, please call the roll.
Mr. Everett.
Present.
Mr. Henderson.
Here.
Ms. Leschuck.
Present.
Mr. Benny's present. Mr. Haney.
Present.
Also, Mr. Coey.
Here.
And Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you, sir.
All right, now we'll move on to item number one, SAF Store, Old Lincoln Highway LLC, 935 Lincoln Highway, TNP number 13-028-039.
Good evening. Julie Von Spreckelson from Law Firm of East Vernon Gray here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Safe Store Old Lincoln Highway LLC, which is the equitable owner of the property located at 935 Old Lincoln Highway. And you may be familiar with this site. This is the property with the Michael's Restaurant, Bar, Lounge, Banquet Hall currently on the property. The applicant is proposing the redevelopment of the property, which includes the demolition of the existing structures, which is, again, the Michael's Restaurant, as well as there's an associated residential structure on the property as well. All proper, all structures are proposed to be demolished and then construction of a three-story self-storage facility building. And for a bit of background, applicant did obtain a use variance to permit this use at the property from the zoning hearing board in June of this year. There were no dimensional variances needed or requested. That was a straight use variance. Thereafter, the applicant did submit the land development application plans accompanying documents and the waiver request letter to the township. And that was on, let me just double check, that was August 16th. And since that time, we have received the township consultant review letters, including the township traffic engineer, the township engineer's review letter, as well as the fire marshal. And I can state that all the comments and all the review letters are will comply responses, except for the three waiver requests that we have. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the project engineer, Dave Boginsky from Gilmore Engineering, and have him run through in a little bit more detail what's being proposed for the site.
Good evening, everyone. Dave Boginsky with Gilmore Associates. So I'm just going to bring up the existing features plan here. So what I'll do is if it appeases the commission, I'll go through the existing features of the site, as well as what we're proposing for the development, and then we'll go through the township or the requested waivers. So first, we have the existing site. So existing site, as Julie mentioned, is Michael's Restaurant. It's a one-story, approximately 14,500 square foot building. There's also an attached structure to it that we're also going to be demoing for the site. Michael's Restaurant, as you can see on the plan here, has asphalt parking areas in the front and the rear of the property. There are two access drives off of Old Lincoln Highway. Beyond the asphalt area in the back there, there's essentially a sea of gravel and dirt that we will also be removing as part of our development. And lastly, there are really no stormwater management features on the site. So when our proposed development, when we put in the warehouse, we intend to manage the stormwater. So moving on to our proposed site here, as you can see, sorry, one second. So for the proposed site, we are proposing a three-story, 36,550 square foot self-storage warehouse building, as Julie mentioned. We will be keeping the two, the same two accesses from Old Lincoln Highway, as you can see on the plan there. Similar to existing condition, we will be, we will have parking areas that will be asphalt in the front and the rear of the property. We are currently proposing 27 parking spaces. We will be increasing that to 28 parking spaces per one of the comments in the Jones Engineering letter. And lastly, we will be proposing in the rear of the site there, a proposed rain garden BNP to capture, collect, and convey, or to manage the stormwater on-site as well. So, and then, I can answer any questions that the board or the commission may have regards to the engineering, if you do so have any questions. So that's it for the existing and the proposed nature of the site. I can move on to the waivers, if that, the requested waivers, if that appeases the commission now.
Yes, let's go over the waivers.
Great. So we have three waivers that we are requesting tonight. So we have, our first waiver A there is going to be for section 191-8.b. This is regarding preliminary and final plan approval. The applicant will address all the comments for all the, all the comment letters as if it were a final plan. So we were just requesting that we are able to go through preliminary and final plans at this time. The second waiver request here, B, is going to be for section 191-39.g. This is for, regarding sidewalk installation. So the existing, the existing and proposed property fronts on Old Lincoln Highway, and to the east and west, there are no sidewalks installed. And this is, Old Lincoln Highway is a highway commercial corridor. So we are requesting that, you know, instead of installing the sidewalks there, since there are no sidewalks around the site, we could, there's a section in, in the ordinance where we can pay a fee in lieu of installation of sidewalks, if that would appease the commission.
So while we're talking about sidewalks, about one property over, there's a motel. And many of the people that live there walk places. You're asking us to waive sidewalks, which is basically essentially 40 feet of sidewalk. So I don't think there's a hardship of installing 40 feet of sidewalks.
What are your thoughts?
Well, I think that we were offering the fee in lieu, because I don't think anybody's going to be walking towards the, the storage facility, or to the storage facility. And it's my understanding that there's not sidewalk on either side of the property. So we thought it would be, you know, it would make more sense to pay a fee in lieu. Either way, it's going to be paid for, whether it's installed or paid for. So it's not like we're, you know, trying to avoid cost. So we just think that it's safer and it makes more sense, since nobody's going to be walking to the storage facility.
We're not, we're not considering walking to the storage facility. We're walking to the convenience store that's around the corner from, on West Trenton Avenue. Something that's happening because of this development and because of the other storage unit development is we've extended water and sewer to that portion of Old Lincoln Highway. So it's more than likely that the other properties over there will be getting redeveloped into a better useful cause. So the price of sidewalks today is not the price of sidewalks 10 years from now. So that's just my opinion.
Understood. Understood. But again, on either side of the property, there is none. So there's, there's just going to be sidewalk on, on this property and not on the abiding property.
Yeah, it wouldn't be the first time we've done that. It's to hope, set a precedence for the next person, so that they can't come in and say the same thing.
I, I understand.
And if you look at the map going down, I know there's not sidewalk there, but the road widens and there's a portion of road, that's asphalt, that they walk down to that convenience store. So as you walk down towards the light, where you hit that and they cut through, through West Trenton Ave, they're walking down that way. And it does get wider from the property in question and the car dealership. When they walk through, there is a sizable asphalt patch, which just acts as a sidewalk. It's not a sidewalk, but when they walk down that way, they come up and, and Michael's has the grass medians out there. But when they walk through, as soon as you hit the audio lab stereo video, there is a section of asphalt that's not on the road that they walk down through that way. So in, in the future, with their redevelopments, as Brian said, I think we're going to kind of push for that. Because, I mean, honestly, is, when the country house gets more and they go up, the water and sewer and other things come in, they might expand on that too, where more people will be coming through there. So we're just kind of looking towards the future.
Understood. We'll discuss it and talk to the board.
Yep, sounds good. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, great. So moving on to the final requested waiver here. This is for section 191-78.c dot, or parentheses two. This is for the existing features within 200 feet of the property. This is a typical request that we, we have for developments around here. We, we surveyed the property and we think we show sufficient existing features along the property lines and for Old Lincoln Highway. So we will be just re-requesting that waiver to not expand beyond that. And that's all I have for the requested waivers. If there's any engineering questions or otherwise, we'd be happy to, to answer those.
In regards to the building construction, is it going to be a concrete building based? And will it be a basement?
Hi, I'm Christopher Russ with Safe Store. No, there will be no basement. It'll be a concrete slab on grade and then non-combustible construction.
Okay. Just because with some of the-
With a fire suppression system.
Yeah, there's so many other buildings, when the concrete structure's in below grade, we would ask the BDA system to put in. But if you're using normal construction, it probably won't be as bad then.
Yeah, we are. Yeah.
Yep. Any other questions from the board?
A question, I have a comment. I'd like to see the, the water line that you're proposing extended all the way to the end of your property.
It stops about 50 feet short of the property line. I'd like to see it extended to the furthest property line to the east. And also noted that, excuse me, that you don't have any handicap parking spaces in the rear parking lot. That all the parking lot, all the handicap spaces are in the front parking lot. If somebody has a storage unit that's in the back of the building, they'd have to go all the way through the building if they were handicapped to get to their storage unit.
Yeah, that, yeah, we can make that change. We'll work with the township engineer on that.
It looks like the Bucks County Planning Commission also made a comment about the stormwater basin, like recommending that you have wet tolerant trees and shrubs species in the proposed stormwater basin bottom rather than seed mix. Is that something that you are willing to do? Having shrubs and more greenery in order to try and help, you know, make up for the loss of trees and things like that, the development of the land?
Yes, absolutely. That's something we can, we can definitely look into and work with the township engineer to, to put some wet tolerant trees in, in the basin.
I mean, we know it's not going to necessarily be a one for one, but the more trees you have, the, the better it is. Also, because of the property on the back area, it'll hopefully help mitigate some of the overflow, which they're currently experiencing from that land.
Absolutely. That makes sense.
Thank you.
Are you planning on storing any vehicles in the back or anything of that nature?
No.
Okay. Also, the trees in the back, are you leaving existing or you're putting in new, correct?
Yeah, so there's a big, a big section of existing that we're leaving in there. But we are also, I can show you a landscape plan. We're also proposing additional tree plantings along, we're installing a fence back there at the request of some of the residential properties back there. So we're installing a fence. We're putting more tree plantings just to have an extra buffer there. So there's a combination of an existing with, but then also more tree plantings as well.
All right. A question. Will all the openings be inside the building? Anything on the outside? Any kind of?
All inside. I think my computer just died, so maybe I can plug it back in.
I just have one other question. With the five houses on the back of the property, will we be working with them? It seems from the initial drawing, they have various types of fencing and all. Are we going to work with the, the local houses to kind of be consistent? Or are you going to put a line of fence in to separate from them?
Yeah, so we've been working with the, the residential properties back there and at their request, oh, I'm sorry. At their request, we've, we're installing a fence to give a little bit more of a buffer.
I'm mic.
Sorry about that. Like we said, we're installing the fence to have a little bit more protection back there. We're leaving a, a good swath of trees back there as well, plus the new planting. So we're, we're working with the, the residential owners back there to make sure that they're satisfied. If that makes sense.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board?
You're going to comply, you said, you stated you can comply with the Jones Engineering letter, also comply with the request of the Fire Marshal's letter and Remington Vernix letter?
That's correct.
All right, entertain a mo, motion if we don't have any more questions or comments.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval for the preliminary land development application, not final, based on the Fire Marshal's letter dated August 21st, 2023, the Remington Vernix letter dated September 20th, 2023, and the Jones Engineering letter dated September 21st, 2023. The only waiver that I personally would be willing to give you is 191-78c2 at this time.
Okay, can I seek clarification and just make a comment about that? These plans were designed to final plan standard, and there's only three waiver requests. Two are routinely granted, and the one has to do with sidewalks, which you recommended that sidewalks be installed. So you recommended against the waiver. So there's just minor changes that need to be made to the plan. So to come back here, you know, we feel that it, it wouldn't be feasible in the sense that we have designed this to final plan standard. There's very few review comments, and they're all will comply. So we're hoping to move this forward, so we can continue forward with the project.
Is anybody else willing to make a motion?
I would second Mary's motion, and I would just say that, to me, there's a lot of stormwater comments in here that would make me believe that it's not designed to final plan specifications.
Okay.
Mr. Benny, poll the board, please.
Mr. Everett?
Hey, so, I mean, from what I can see from the comments, and I've designed these plans, and we've worked with Jones Engineering on a lot of projects now, I don't see that there's that many stormwater comments. We can certainly address them. I don't think there is anything major to warrant not perhaps granting-
We've made a motion, there's a second, so we need to-
Polling the board.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Ms. Leschuck?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Mr. Haney?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item number two, UGN Logistics, Inc., 745 Philadelphia Avenue, TNP number 13-047-062-002, 13-047-065, and 13-047-066.
Yeah. There you go, sir.
Good evening, commission members. Bryce McWiggin from Bagley Carlin here on behalf of the applicant, UGN Logistics, for the property located on 745 Philadelphia Avenue. Thanks again for having us tonight. And I'd like to apologize if we were being a little loud out in the hallway, not used to the echoes in, in the new Falls Township, temporary Falls Township municipal building. So thank you very much for having us tonight. First off, I'm here with, I'd like to introduce John Richardson, the engineer on the project, who will be speaking with you in a few moments, together with Eugene Smirnoff, who's the owner of the business and, or the owner of the property, and operates the, hopefully his business out of this property once all of our relief is completed and the project is completed. Thank you again for having us. The property at issue is 745 Philadelphia Avenue. By way of reference, the property is three separate parcels. Together, it totals approximately 2.1 acres and sits in the heavy industrial zoning district. We're here today seeking a recommendation for approval of our preliminary and final land development application. Just by way of a little bit of background, what our plan is, is to essentially take these three separate lots, consolidate them into one more typical heavy industrial parcel, and to construct a 4,800 square foot structure on there, which will serve a couple different purposes. It'll have a 350 square foot office portion of it, as well as the balance will be a garage that will allow my client to repair some of his trucks, of three separate bays. So we received zoning relief back in March of this year, related to impervious surface, relating to parking setbacks, as well as buffering off of Lewis Avenue. As you see, the property sits at the corner of Philadelphia Avenue and Lewis. And what our plan would be, as you see, is the one structure with some accessory parking areas that would be used by my client's business. Obviously, we've received review letters for, from township engineer, traffic engineer, fire marshal, and the Bucks County Planning Commission. But spoiler alert, pretty much everything is will comply. There's a couple little things I'd like to discuss, but we'll mention those when we go through the waiver list. But before we get into that, I think it might behoove the commission to get a little bit of a feel for the property. It's currently a bit of a mess, and I'd like to think that we're making it a little bit more normal and presentable. But you don't have to take my word for it. I'm going to kick things over to John to maybe go through the plan real quick, and then we can go through waivers. All right?
Good evening, and thank you. The, the site's located at the intersection of Philadelphia Ave and Lewis Ave. It's currently occupied by the remains of several buildings that have been demolished. It appears that maybe around 2008, about half of them were demolished, and then the other half were demolished around 2012. There's broken up concrete and asphalt and stone. As Bryce said, it's a little bit of a mess. The proposal would be to essentially remove all of that existing mess and construct a 4,800 square foot building, which would be occupied by the owner. The, it would be connected out to Philadelphia Avenue via driveway. That area will be paved. It would be handicap accessible. The area to the right of the building and behind the building would be a stone storage area, both for trailer parking, but also for the, some of the automobile parking, if it's required. We don't believe it is based on the use of the building, but we're showing it for complacency with the township requirements.
What exactly will be the use?
I'm sorry, what's that?
What will be the use?
Perhaps the owner could elaborate on that, but it's, it's essentially a, a small trucking business. The, the parking within the stone area would not be striped. That's just shown for complacency. The, the perimeter of the use essentially would be landscaped with, with street trees. The rear of the site is currently wooded. We're not touching that woods at all. It's, it's not technically classified as woods by the ordinance, but functionally, it's, it's essentially woods. We're not disturbing that area at all. And kind of on the back corner of the property, it drops down to an existing drainage feature. I wouldn't exactly call it a creek or anything like that, but it is a drainage feature, and eventually that bleeds over into some ponding. The, the storm, the site drains towards that water feature in the rear. The stormwater would be managed by an underground drywall, which would capture the majority of the impervious surfaces on the site and be managed back to existing condition. As, as part of the development, we would be adding impervious surface, but there's already a significant amount on the site. So the site currently has 42,000 square feet of impervious. We'd be bringing that to just shy of 62,000. So we, we are adding 20,000 square feet of impervious, but as I said, our stormwater has been designed. We did do soil tests at the site. The stormwater's been designed in accordance with a soil test. While the entire right, Bryce, I think you're, yeah. Sorry, I had to zoom in and out. The entire right side of the property, like I said, has been occupied by buildings in the past. And that area is not conducive to infiltration due to the previous structures. So the stormwater management system has been designed behind the building and in the parking lot. Unless there's any questions, that's kind of a, a quick rundown of the property.
And, and Mr. Benny, to confirm, yeah. So Eugene operates a, a small trucking business. He has approximately four employees, full-time employees apart from himself, who will be working on-site. I believe two accountants himself and, is it a dispatcher?
A fleet manager. He, there are approximately 20 or so trucks that his company does own, but they're typically out making deliveries in long haul. So most of the time, there's not going to be much on the site. On weekends, there will be more trucks than, you know, weekdays, because people generally will come back on a Friday, keep the truck there over the weekend, and then leave early Monday morning. But that's not everyone. And again, we're only dealing with 20 or 25 trucks in total. So that's the, the plan. That's the proposed use. Fortunately, we didn't have to request any relief for the proposed use. It was all, like I said, pervious, buffering, and, and parking setbacks.
When you say trucks, tractor trailers?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And the structure that we're proposing will be designed to perform repairs on truck cabs, so they're going to be slightly higher in stature and nature to be able to fit that in the, in the structure. So that's the general plan here. Like I said, we've had the opportunity to review the various review letters that we have received. Pretty much all of the items are will complies. I would like to go through the waivers first. Then there's a couple different discussion items of certain things that are semi-will complies, and a few items I think we might just, maybe should provide some additional information on. So in pertinent part, we're asking for a total of eight waivers. The first waiver is for, to, to allow the preliminary and final land development simultaneously. I would submit that's a relatively straightforward waiver. We're next asking for a waiver to not widen Philadelphia Avenue and Lewis Avenue to 32 feet. We're just like to keep them as is. And I know that Remington and Vernix has reviewed that request. Has no objection to Lewis Avenue. They did note that Philadelphia Avenue is a state road, so we will be having communications with PennDOT to, to confirm that they're in agreement with our request.
While we're on that subject, I personally would recommend that the road be widened, and I'll tell you why. With all the development of the mill property into warehouses and another proposed warehouse on Pennsylvania Avenue, there's going to be signage that's going to be put up, that's going to direct traffic, truck traffic, to stay off of West Pennsylvania Avenue and go down Philadelphia Avenue. Now, the traffic that there's, that travels that road now will probably be increased substantially, because all the trucks will not be allowed to go down West Pennsylvania Avenue. Anybody who gets off Route 1 at West Pennsylvania will be forced to go down Philadelphia Avenue. So me personally, I think it should be widened, and as other people come in there, we would make them widen it also. That's my personal opinion.
Yeah, and, and like I said, we, we haven't had those discussions with PennDOT yet, but, you know, what PennDOT says goes. So, you know, we'll talk to them about it and see what they say. There's-
There's three waivers essentially, or it's like, yeah, three waivers that we're requesting related to curbing. We're asking for waivers to not curb the existing roadway, to not curb the driveway that we plan to construct, as well as to not provide curbing internally within our parking lot. Now, the last waiver regarding curbing within the parking lot, we do need to amend that a little bit. That was one of the comments in the review letter that we do need to address. Apparently, within SALDO, you're required to have a 15-foot setback, apparently from parking to the building edge. We're only proposing six feet. So we would amend our waiver request to also seek a waiver of that additional nine feet of distance between the building and the parking area. Apart from the curbing, we would also, we would also request a waiver to provide, or to show the existing features within 200 feet of the plan. Again, that's of, what I would submit is a standard form waiver that we're requesting. We're also, on that same vein, requesting a waiver to allow a one-inch-to-30-foot scale, which, again, legibility. We're dealing with a relatively small site here. Otherwise, that's essentially the waivers at issue. The two other issues that I would just like to discuss are, actually, one, because there was a comment in the review letter regarding stormwater management. We'll happily resend our stormwater management plans that Heath's office and John's office prepared, but John already discussed how we plan to manage stormwater on-site, what's existing. There's essentially no stormwater management and a significant amount of impervious. While we're adding some impervious, we also are adding stormwater management to capture more than what we're adding, and there's also some existing drainage features nearby that assist in our, that help us in doing that. The other point that I think we need to discuss is sewer. I don't want to get into this, because I'm not a sewer or septic guy, but I'll leave it to John. Apparently, there's not public sewer in the area, so we're going to be using some form of on-lot septic. But like I said, let me let John go through the details so I don't make a mess of myself.
So we were under the impression that the area did have public sewer, but we have confirmed that it does not have public sewer. So the current thinking would be that the site would have to have a septic system. The septic system would most likely be over towards Lewis Avenue, the way the plan's oriented to the north of the dark green area, which designates the woods, but to the south of the stone area, there's a little piece of land there that's more than large enough for a septic system. So the current thinking would be that the lot would have septic, and that's approximately where it would be located.
Is that the area that you said didn't perk?
No, the area that doesn't perk is kind of like where the limb of the stone is.
So about 20 feet away?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's also up gradient.
Do you think it's going to change 20 feet away?
Well, it's also up gradient from where the septic would be.
I have a question. The Remington Vernix letter, they proposed that the dumpster location is too close to the entrance. That's really feasible. I mean, what if somebody is trying to come in, but you're also trying to empty out the dumpster? You are 100% blocking that way.
Right, we'll move that, we'll be in compliance with that review letter.
Okay.
Yeah, and to that, we're fortunate enough where there is a significant amount of area on the property where we can accommodate that.
Hence my curiosity as to why someone decided to place it there of all places. Okay.
I have a question about, so he's only going to store his trucks there? He's not going to rent out any space to other trucks or anything?
Yes, that's correct.
All right.
Will there be trucks idling throughout the night? What are the orders of operation?
I'm going to have Eugene talk about some of the specifics here.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Eugene. So regarding your question, sir, there's not going to be trucks idling overnight. The traffic is not going to be really heavy there, because we go all 48 states. So when the trucks are like going for a week or two weeks, maybe three weeks on the road, then come back for like a few days. Yeah.
So you're not going to have any loads idle at the site?
No, because we have flatbeds and drivens, so there's nothing like... And people usually, when they come here, they go to sleep, to their, to homes. That's it.
Do you have any refrigerated trucks?
I do, but it's all, they're not going to be parked there, because those are owner operators and they park elsewhere. Because basically, my company is like up to like 30 trucks right now, and like one-third owner operators. So basically, in my fleet, there is some units, refrigerated units, but they're not going to be parked there, because I don't lease this space. It's just for my trucks.
Okay, so no refrigerated trucks will be parked there, running all night or anything like that?
No, no, no.
My next question would be around the vegetation along Lewis Ave. The Bucks County Planning Commission letter from August 25th asked about buffering yard requirements, asking to add shrubs and screening plants along that side of the road, and I don't see anything addressing that on the current plans.
So the review is based on the current plans. We would be willing to add some additional buffer planting along there. That wouldn't be an issue.
The variance that was granted for the 25-foot buffer instead of the 50-foot buffer, where exactly was that location?
It's around essentially the perimeter of the site. The buffer is required because of the zoning and the surrounding uses, but it runs along Lewis, and it runs along the far left side of the property.
So you weren't granted relief entirely, but just allowed to shorten it up? So I would agree with Mr. O'Brien's comment that there should be some buffering.
Yeah, and we can add that.
Does the property have public water?
No, that would be well till. Which is a similar condition to all the surrounding uses.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I would just say that, given the fact that this doesn't have public sewer, and it's, we don't know if it actually will perk, that I would be uncomfortable granting final preliminary, or final approval until we know for sure that. I don't think it's appropriate for us to recommend a final approval for something that doesn't have a sewer.
So what I would ask in that situation is, you know, we, obviously, we just... So in preparations for tonight, we did confirm, obviously, that there is no public sewer in the area, and we are in the process of getting someone out there to do the testing for that. They're a little backed up at the time being, so we're expecting it's going to take maybe a month or more. Obviously, we know we need to do that before we end up making our way to the supervisors and before we move forward with the plans. But for the purposes of tonight, to be honest, we're not too concerned with being able to provide on-lot septic. If you look just some of the neighboring properties to the side, you have a few separate postage-stamped residential lots, and they have on-lot septic as well. So, you know, we're not overly concerned about that, but obviously, we don't have that completed for tonight. So what I would ask is potential recommendation for preliminary and final approval conditioned on us providing that information to the Township Engineer's Office upon receipt.
I would just say that just because they have septic doesn't mean it works properly.
Well, and again, that's why I, I'm perf, I would be, I would suggest, or I would hope that we could do some conditional approval upon us providing information and those, the report to the Township Engineer's Office to review and to make sure that this will work for us. Like I said, we're not overly concerned with it, but obviously, we need to dot that i and cross that t before we ever do anything. So that's the only request I would have, so that way we don't have to, so we can keep the project moving forward and don't have to trouble you with this again.
I just have one more question for the operations of the property. Will there be signage that directs the traffic, truck traffic, to use Tyburn Road rather than go through Morrisville? There's similar signage on other properties adjacent to your property that direct the trucks to use Tyburn Road and not Pennsylvania Avenue.
I'm not aware of that, to be honest. A signage, would you explain that, what it means?
A sign that says, "Don't turn right, turn left", that so that the trucks don't go through the residential portion of Morrisville to get to Route 1?
No, there is not going to be any signage, no.
So we would recommend that when you do install, that basically from the way your building's set up on all 13...
So, sorry about that. So what we basically recommend is basically no right turns out of there, because you go right, you're going to end through downtown Morrisville. So it would be, basically make a left out of there and have your traffic coming in and out of Tyburn Road via Old 13 or Philadelphia Avenue. So they would have their main infrastructure there, versus if you made the right out of your building, you'd go downtown through homes and stuff like that. So basically, we're asking just have a sign to say,
Oh, yeah.
Make a left, and when they come in to come back to your facility, come down Tyburn Road and get off at that Philadelphia Ave exit to come there. So it's a high-traffic area.
Of course, yes, we can do this. Yes.
Just to clarify, though, that only applies to trucks, regular passenger vehicles.
Correct, correct, yes.
So, and again, this is more of a regional thing with the development of the mill and the warehouse space on West Pennsylvania Avenue. You know, there's been conversations between our municipality, Morrisville, about how to minimize the impact on the residential properties that are on West Pennsylvania Avenue and also on Philadelphia Avenue closer to, you know, West Pennsylvania and Philadelphia.
Yeah, sure, and then, look, we understand, obviously, you know, this is a small-ish property for the area, so it's not going to single-handedly resolve any issues or exacerbate it too much, but we don't want to exacerbate any issues, period, that are ongoing. So we don't mind putting up the sign, and of course, Eugene doesn't mind specifically instructing his guys not to make that right turn. Not a problem.
Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I will recommend preliminary, I'm sorry, not final, land development application for 745 Philadelphia Avenue, TNP number 13-047-062-022, 13-047-065, and 13-047-066, based on the Remington Vernix letter dated August 15th, 2023, the Fire Marshal letter dated June 29th, 2023, and the Jones Engineering Associates letter dated August 16th, 2023, with waivers of section 191-31.A and 391-... Oh, yes. And 391-62, section 191-36.D, section 191-37.B, section 191-78.C2, and section 191-80.C1. I think I got all that right. I will not be recommending the waiver for 191-31.A, because I do think that that should be widened, and that there will also, this is also based on that you would also add signage. Okay, as we just discussed. Was there anything else that I missed?
Did you say 78-C2?
78?
C10, it should be.
Oh, it should be C10. Wait, 10?
Yeah.
Oh. I mean, I thought that it was this, what we were going for. That one's the Bucks County Planning.
I think there's a typo in Bucks County Planning Commission's.
I beg your pardon? So C10, then?
C10.
That would be for the...
200 feet.
Yeah, the 200 feet, from requiring that all physical feature tax partials owner names within 200 feet of the land development be provided on the plan. That's what the waiver was.
Does that sound correct there, Mr. McGuigan?
That sounds correct, yes.
Correct, okay.
I will second.
Mr. Benny, please poll the board.
Mr. Everett?
Yes.
Ms. Lushchuk?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Benny's a yes. Mr. Haney?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we'll move on to item number three, approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to amend the minutes to reflect that the meeting date was August 22nd, 2023, not June 27th. And I will make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
I'll second. Benny, poll the board.
All in favor.
I'm abstained. All in favor.
All in favor.
Aye.
Pose, nobody. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all.